I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to its republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, John, for being here. We appreciate you all coming. City manager, are there any additions or deletions?
There are none.
Okay. Mr. Abraham, do you read the minutes?
I will. I move that the reading of the minutes for November 11th and 18th, 2014 city commission meeting be waived and that the minutes of said meetings prepared by the city clerk be approved as written.
Second. City clerk?
Mr. Abraham?
Aye.
Mr. Gault?
Aye.
Mr. Rhodes?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Wilson?
Aye. Commissioner Gault, please.
I move that the following documents be received and filed: certificate of liability insurance and notice of reinstatement of workers' compensation insurance for Mueller Electric, certificate of liability insurance and performance bond for Swift Roofing, Inc., contracts and agreements, assumption agreement with the Kentucky Infrastructure Authority for Hindren Water District Loan C-91-12, agreement with Swift Roofing, Inc. for Police Department Fire Station Number Two roof replacement, agreement with Kemper CPA Group for the preparation of the city's comprehensive annual financial reports for fiscal year ended June 30th, 2014, Paducah Junior College, Inc. basic financial segments and supplementary information for year ended June 30th, 2014, bids for Paducah Police Department, Paducah Police Department uniforms, Gault's Bluegrass Uniform, Wagner Clothing, Inc.
Second.
Any discussion? Okay. City clerk?
Mr. Abraham?
Aye.
Mr. Gault?
Aye.
Mr. Rhodes?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Wilson?
Aye. We'll move two minutes. Orders and Commissioner Rhodes, please.
Okay. I move that municipal order entitled, "A Municipal Order Authorizing the Mayor to Execute a 2014-2015 Assistance to Firefighters Matching Grant Application and All Documents Necessary Through the Department of Homeland Security Federal Emergency Management Agency" in the amount of $214,578 to be used for the Paducah Fire Department be adopted.
Second.
Good evening.
Kevin?
Hi, this is, I came tonight just to request permission to apply for the FEMA Assistance Firefighter Grant for the $238,420. The application would include replacing obsolete protective equipment as well as a training program along with mobile props that will enhance Paducah Fire Department's ability to do continuous training.
Okay.
We also do have the matching, the 90/10 match.
You have it set?
Yes.
Any questions?
Well, I was just, I guess this was a challenge. It took me a while to figure out what an SCBA was.
Self-contained breathing apparatus.
That's right. I went to the, in fact, I found a company called Structural Composit Industries that has a 30-year tank.
Has a 30-year tank system?
Yeah.
Most of our tanks have 15-year lifespans on them.
Well, this is their, their big sales push.
Yeah. But we have 24 air packs, though, that meet FEMA's definition of obsolete. At this point in time, we're trying to get replaced.
Okay. We'll have a conversation about Structural Composit Industries.
You still have permission?
Sorry?
You were asking permission to apply for the grant.
Yeah.
You were, weren't you?
Yes.
You still have it?
Oh, thank you.
I think we'll vote on it next week.
No, we vote on it tonight.
Tonight, on the, okay, great. City clerk?
Mr. Abraham?
Aye.
Mr. Gault?
Aye.
Mr. Rhodes?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Wilson?
Aye. All right. Now we'll move to ordinances adoption and we will vote on these.
Yes.
Commissioner Abraham, please.
I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt an ordinance entitled, and ordinance repealing ordinance 2013-68042, and adopting the City of Paducah, Kentucky revised annual budget for the fiscal year July 1st, 2013 through June 30th, 2014 by estimating revenues and resources and appropriating funds for the operation of the city government. This ordinance is summarized as follows: The City of Paducah repeals ordinance number 2013-68042 that estimated revenues and resources and appropriated funds for fiscal year 2014 and adopts a revised budget for fiscal year 2014 that reflects all adjustments made throughout the fiscal year and any adjustments required by the independent financial authorities, auditors. The appropriations of city government for a total of $79,67,455 and summarized by funds as follows: General: $31,869,360; Small Grants: $21,500; MAP: $1,521,210; Investments: Debt: $2,829,110; CIP: $12,263,605; Bonds: $9,584,715; Solid Waste: $4,536,390; Civic Center: $82,70; Rental: $144,105; Radio DEPR: $148,480; Fleet: $556,100; Fleet Trusts: $799,245; Self Insurance: $1,028,255; Health Insurance: $3,568,835; and AEPF... Wait a second. I have no idea what these abbreviations are. So, AEPF, PF, PFTSTS: $1,662,235, total $79,607,455.
Second. That's a hard one.
That's crazy.
Thank you. Any other discussion? City clerk?
Mr. Abraham?
Aye.
Mr. Gault?
Aye.
Mr. Rhodes?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Wilson?
Aye. Commissioner Gault, please.
I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt an ordinance entitled, "An Ordinance Revising Chapter Six: Alcoholic Beverages of the Code of Ordnances of the City of Paducah, Kentucky." This ordinance is summarized as follows: This ordinance will repeal and supersede certain portions of following ordinances. Chapter Six, Article One, Section Six dash Four allows NQ dash two licensees dining facility of a hotel motel and restaurant to have a minimum seating capacity of 50 people at tables. Section Six dash Five allows underage persons in a licensed facility which receives 50% or more of their gross annual receipts from sale of food and has a minimum seating capacity of 50 people at tables. Chapter Six, Article Two, Section Six dash 33 requires the alcoholic beverage applicant to execute a form entitled acknowledgment by ABC applicant, and Section Six dash 41A allows two types of distillers licensed, Class A and Class B.
Second.
City clerk?
Mr. Abraham?
Aye.
Mr. Gault?
Aye.
Mr. Rhodes?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Wilson?
Aye. Commissioner Rhodes, please.
Okay. So, I'm the car guy. Is that it, Tammy? Is that what you set this thing up?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt an ordinance entitled, "An Ordinance Accepting the Bid of Linwood Motors for the Sale of the City of Nine Vehicles for Use by the Paducah Police Department and Two Vehicles to Be Used by the Fire Department", authorizing the possible purchase of up to two additional police vehicles prior to June 30th, 2015, and authorizing the mayor to execute a contract for same. This ordinance is summarized as follows: The City of Paducah accepts the bid of Linwood Motors in the total amount of $320,748 for the purchase of nine vehicles at $29,738 each for use by the Paducah Police Department and two vehicles for use by the Fire Department at $26,553 each, approves the purchase of up to two additional police vehicles at a unit price of $29,738 for the use by the Paducah Police Department in the event the city may need to purchase additional vehicles prior to June 30th, 2015, and hereby authorizes the mayor to execute a contract with Linwood Motors for the purchase of the vehicles.
Second.
Thank you.
City clerk?
Mr. Abraham?
Aye.
Mr. Gault?
Aye.
Mr. Rhodes?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Wilson?
Aye. Okay, we'll go into ordinance introduction. Commissioner Abraham, please.
I move that the Board of Commissioners introduce an ordinance entitled, "An Ordinance Authorizing the Mayor to Execute a Change Order Number One with Yech Incorporated for the Noble Park Lake Bankment Stabilization Project." This ordinance is summarized as follows: The mayor is hereby authorized to execute Change Order Number One for an increase in the amount of $11,789 with Yech, Inc., for necessary changes for the Noble Park Lake Bank Stabilization Project, increasing the total cost to $204,194.9.
Second. Rick?
Mayor, excuse me, Mayor Pro Tim and Commissioner, this is going to close out that project out of Noble Park on the bank stabilization where we've built the wall and sidewalk. Youngblood Excavating has completed that work out there. We have a few little minor things that we're doing to touch it up and to expand that project a little bit. We're using some of the sidewalk money that you all provided for us in the budget to correct the asphalt sidewalk that was falling apart out there in that same general area so we can make that quadrant better and making a final improvement. And then probably in the spring, we'll have to go and do some final dressing, the seeding in the area because the concrete trucks are going in there and making some ruts, but it's all in the effort to make the park a lot nicer.
Do you plan to do some more work similar on other areas?
Not, well, as far as sidewalk, yes. As far as bank stabilization, no. We would have to have another budget meeting that we'll be bringing up as we enter into the 2016 budget cycle to discuss those things because we will be at our limit as far as your current budget is.
We're anxious to see the public's reaction and your all's reaction to this. I'm confident it's going to be very positive even today with a little bit of green showing up on some of the area where the new flood wall is. You get a pretty good idea how it's going to look and it's a, it's a great project both from a safety point of view and an aesthetic point of view and with what Rick and Mark are doing with some of the sidewalk replacement and putting a little extralineal footage in here and there makes it just that much more accessible for people whether they be on foot or pushing a carriage or what have you. So, I think you're going to be very pleased with the project and resources permitting, I think it's quite likely we're going to want to continue down the road, hopefully not too far.
Rick, I have, I have two questions of you.
Okay.
Since I've been the Duck Island guy. Now, Rick, the term here, it says muck. Now, is that a technical term? I'd like to know if it's muck and if so, could you explain the unit price of muck removal? I'd like to know that.
Okay. There is, there is this whole term referred to as muck, but when we drained the lake down, okay, to give us the accessibility to put the wall in, we noticed that there was a lot of organic material at the bottom of the lake. And then when we refilled the lake, there was portions of it that actually the lake was not going to come in contact with the wall because the muck came up such that the wall's going to be there, but you're going to see this pile of not-so-attractive material that was there. So, we went ahead and made the depth even all the way in front of the wall so that you wouldn't have soil showing up where the water would not be in contact with the wall. So, it was more from an aesthetic point of view to clean it up while we were there while the water was down.
You won't even let me hose you down real good. But I mean, it looks great because I was there today and my brother's in town and he was impressed. And it's, I'm sure that we'll have many people who'll say, "Let's do some more." I expect that call.
I think so as well, so.
Thanks.
So, this, this change order is because we're adding, we're doing something.
There, there were pluses and minuses. There were some things that we added and some things that we took away, okay? But after all the adding, all the pluses and minuses throughout the entire contract, we looked at, we had $11,000 in additional money to complete the project as we know it today, which was a 6% overrun on the total project. I will let you all know, you got one heck of a bid on this. For the work that got done for the original contract at $192,000 versus the effort that they went, you, we got a deal. Of course, I really shouldn't be saying that if another contractor's watching because if we try to build one next year, they'll know that we got a deal. But surely, I hope everybody bids on it again.
Any other questions? Thank you, Rick.
Okay.
Mr. Gault, please.
I move that the Board of Commissioners introduce an ordinance entitled, "An Ordinance Authorizing the Mayor to Execute a Contract Between ESRI and City on behalf of the members of the MAP GIS Consortium for a Multi-Jurisdictional Enterprise License Agreement." This ordinance is summarized as follow: That the mayor is hereby authorized to execute a contract between ESRI and the city on behalf of the members of the MAP GIS Consortium for the acquisition and administration of a multi-jurisdictional enterprise license agreement in an amount not to exceed $60,000 per year, total of $180,000 for a three-year agreement. The contract will become effective January 1st, 2015 and end December 1st, 2017.
Second.
Ben?
Mayor Pro Tim and Commissioner, what we have here is a renewal of our existing mapping software contract with the vendor, ESRI. As you heard, the total is $180,000 for three years. It's billed on an annual basis in $60,000 increments. That is an increase over our previous three-year contract, which was $150,000 billed in the 50,000-per-year contract. The way this is set up is the MAP GIS Consortium is six members, the city being one, county, JSA, Paducah Water, Paducah Power, and 911 Agency. So, the main contract, the main bill is billed through the city and then, and we have an inter-local agreement set up with those other member agencies to then bill the rest of those agencies for their portion. So, the actual city portion that we will be responsible for is the $16,000 of that total. That will be what will be left after we bill the other agencies for their portion on that annual basis. So, so that's the way that is. The way that inter-local agreement's set up is the percentages that each agency is charged is based on the level of use or the number of licenses they have under this software contract. That percentage is figured and then, and then that percentage of that 60,000 is what the agency pays. Couple of things I'd just like to point out quickly is that the city's portion actually, even though the contract increased by 10,000 a year, the city's portion actually decreased by $4,000 a year. And that's due to, largely due to Paducah Water and Paducah Power expanding their use of GIS, which is, which is a good thing, and using more licenses. So, our percentage went down as a whole. So, that, that's, you know, increased GIS, increased asset management by these agencies, more, more government efficiency is the, is the goal there. The other thing is consortium-wide, so between all six members, it represents savings by having this contract versus doing a traditional license agreement, a savings of around $95,740. So, if each one of us went on our own and got these pieces of software and had the number of licenses that we currently have, it would be $95,000, $96,000 more than what we're currently paying under this structure. So, the city savings just for this, just for our agency is about $16,000 a year that we would save over, over the traditional method. So, that, if you have any questions, we have to answer.
Anything?
So, Ben, so actually the city's part of that 60,000, our part is less than 25% of it.
That is correct, yeah. If you look at that spreadsheet that I believe is in your packet, if you look at the top far-right column of the agency percent, you will see the percentage is each agency, each agency pays. That totals 100.
Okay, yeah, I didn't, I just had to, I had to do it my head. I'm sorry, I didn't look at that.
It's kind of confusing, but works out quite nicely in the end.
Okay.
Thank you, Ben.
Thank you.
Commissioner Rhodes, please.
I move that the Board of Commissioners introduce an ordinance entitled, "An Ordinance Authorizing the Creation of a Separate Project Account PF-0048 to Hold Proceeds from the Oak Grove Cemetery Trust for Disbursement for the General Care, Maintenance, and Embellishment of Oak Grove Cemetery." This ordinance is summarized as follows: Upon receipt of the proceeds from the termination of the Perpetual Care and Maintenance Trust Fund, the City of Paducah shall deposit such proceeds in a separate project account PF-0048, views only for general care, maintenance, and embellishment of Oak Grove Cemetery.
Second. You're going to talk about it?
Mayor Pro Tim, the Commissioner, yes. We, this is, we, we broke the trust that we have with the, that we've been gathering for years and placed it also into this count for the exact same thing. The, and that was, we had talked about that over the past couple of weeks. With that, we're putting that into the fund. This will help to help maintain Oak Grove Cemetery and 20% of each sale in the future will then go into this count also.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Abraham, please.
I move that the Board of Commissioners introduce an ordinance entitled, "An Ordinance Approving an Interlocal Agreement Between the City of Paducah, Kentucky and the City of Murray, Kentucky, and Authorizing the Mayor to Execute Said Agreement." This ordinance is summarized as follows: The City of Paducah hereby approves an interlocal agreement with the City of Murray to co-optively administer a coordinated investigation program for the City of Murray and Paducah's Police Department and authorizes the mayor to execute said agreement.
Second. Chief Carhill?
Mayor Pro Tim, Commissioners, City Manager, a lot of the, what Commissioner Abraham read to you is a lot of fancy wording for if they ever need assistance, they contact us, and if we need assistance, we'll contact them. It's just a formal document allowing that to happen. Very rarely is that used, but it does give us some liability coverage in case we do need to send somebody to them and/or for equipment also.
Thank you. Commissioner Gault, please.
I move that the Board of Commissioners introduce an ordinance entitled, "An Ordinance Accepting the Bid of Gault's, Inc. for the Purchase of Uniforms for Police Department Employees and Authorizing the Mayor to Execute a Contract for Same." This ordinance is summarized as follows: That the City of Paducah accepts the bid of Gault's, Inc. in an effort or in an amount not to exceed $80,000 per year for furnishing the city with uniforms for police department employees for a period of two calendar years, ending with December 31st, 2016, and authorizing the mayor to execute a contract for same.
Second.
Chief?
Mayor Pro Tim, here again. We are in front of you with a, a contract for a two-year bid. We bring this back to you each, each biannual. Contract, whenever it expires, we've set out for bids this year. We had three vendors that bid. I think in your bid tab forms that you all have in your packets, you'll see the pricing on some of those. A large percentage, or not a large percentage, one of the percentages weighted in there is the ability to provide electronic purchasing. That in itself, very similar, I can equate that to maybe an Amazon website that you would go to, one click, you purchase, it draws down out of your account. That in itself is going to reduce our administrative cost on the back end of maintaining all those balances and the, and the labor-intensive side of that from making sure those packages are delivered to their correct employees and the returns and all that. That's going to reduce that drastically. So, we're going to have a huge, I'd like to give you a dollar figure, I can't do that tonight, we're going to have a huge savings in that area. So, we're, we're kind of excited about this and hope that pans out for us over the next two years.
Any questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Well, we're going, doing well on time. City manager, do you have a report?
I have a couple things I want to mention. That the work on the hotel development is going well. There's been a lot of progress made in the last week or so. Some of that's been noted in the press. Want to point out again that the Independence Bank is a financial partner and has approved the loan. There are a number of requirements that any lender has for a loan, particularly of a project of this nature, and those are and have been in the court of the developers and they have proceeded along with a lot of that. Right now, one thing that is being worked on and I think pretty close to being ready is a, is a permit associated with the ground disturbance and, and in some proximity to the flood wall. So, that's just an example, the kind of things that, that are associated with the effort to prepare on the part of the developers for the closing, which we expect to happen sometime in December. I would like to ask Mark Thompson to come forward and comment on a few goings-on in his department and give us your take on, on the Noble Park Bank stabilization as well, Mark, in terms of.
City manager and Commissioner and Mayor Pro Tim, yes, I am excited. And Rick coined a term that he uses with the, with the, if you look at the lake from one side and then the other, but the new side he refers to as the money shot, that it's, that it's a, it's a beautiful setting and it's going to be really nice when the, when the grass comes in and the flowers are planted in the, in the areas. It's really going to be nice and it's going to be one of those, like, I, I believe that we're just going to have to continue on the, to the other side. It's, it's making a big difference in the lake and the work that Rick's folks are doing on adding, and we've been adding the sidewalks as we, as we're going a little bit at a time to work out through the money. We're at about two-thirds of the way around with, with those types of things, including the runs out to the other parking lots. I think we're a little better than that. But anyway, we're, it's, it's really good and his folks are doing a great job and it's just going to be a great deal with that. So, I do have some activities that we're going to have, a few things that we're going on. I think I've got about six listed here. First of all, on Thursday at 5:30 is the lighting ceremony in Noble Park.
Wait, Thursday or Friday?
Excuse me, Friday, Friday.
Friday.
Correct me. I have Friday written down here. I'm just going off the top of my head. Friday, I'll be eating dinner hopefully at Thursday. But Friday, and then that starts the can collection and the, and the money raising for that. And all monies goes to Paducah Cooperative Ministries and who else? Somebody else, right off the top of my head. But anyway, it goes to great charities. Then on Saturday, the Dickens Christmas and Bi-Locals, Bi-Small, all of that's downtown, starting probably at 10 o'clock or so. Santa Claus will be down there. I know that in the New Gazeebo. So, we'll have that going on. And then on Tuesday, next Tuesday, at 5:30 is this group, along with park staff, will be doing can collection and holding court there at the collection, at the hut there, collecting funds and cans. Then on Saturday, we've got a thing or two happening. We have the candy cane hunt, which has normally been at Collar Park. We're moving it downtown to the Carson Center Lawn. And so, it's going to be going on downtown. That registration starts at noon there and the hunt will start at 1 o'clock. We'll divide that up into age groups and they'll vacuum the place just like, as, as quickly as it can happen. It'll probably happen in about five minutes. Then we have our new event, the Ugly Sweater Run, and you all have in front of you, we are cosponsored by Rehab Associates and they are helping us. It's going to be a fun run of a mile, starting at 14th and going down to Second Street, the route of the parade. They're going to clear out the route of the parade before the parade starts. And it will, registration onsite there will be again at 3 o'clock in the portico of the police department. The police department's helping us there. Or they can register at this office next week. So, they'll, we'll be giving away these ski caps to the first 100 registrants. We do have more, but we're guaranteeing them to the first 100. So, with that, and then after that, the, the run starts at 4:30 and then 30 minutes later, we start the Christmas parade. And right now, we have 84 registrants and we're all lined up. In fact, they're giving away the packets to the registrants as we speak. So, we've got a good show and you all have a horse and carriage for the Commissioners and we're ready for you all, too.
You gave me a shovel.
Oh, you're behind the carriage. That's right.
Sounds great, Mark. A lot of.
We're going to have a good time.
And wonderful times ahead. So, thank you.
And then the ninth, we'll be giving out the awards.
Okay. So, next Tuesday, we will not meet, we will be at Noble Park, 5:30, collecting cans.
Correct.
Look forward to seeing everyone there.
That's right. Look forward to it.
Okay. I'd like to ask Fire Marshal Greg Cherry to come forward to share with the Commission a new initiative that his division is going to be implementing shortly.
Good evening, everyone. We are getting We are getting ready to launch a program, it's called the Courtesy Inspection Program, or, excuse me, Courtesy Survey Program. We, what we'll be doing is going around to businesses throughout the city. We'll be doing two or three different things while we're there. One will be a pre-plan, we'll be pre-planning the facility in case they do have an emergency, figuring out where all the breaker boxes are, the fire alarm panels, anything that is pertinent to the guys on inspection side, when they show up, they'll need to know. We'll also be doing a Courtesy Survey, which would be, if there is any fire code violations that they might have, we will recommend to them that they get them fixed. It will be a non-enforcement, you know, they're not going to get rolled up or anything like that, this is going to be a nice way to try to get them in compliance without having any enforcement behind it. This will be starting in January. The crews have been training on implementing this program, so here in the next couple of months, you should see the trucks out a lot of businesses. Anybody have any questions?
Greg, that will not be at any manpower expense addition, that will be done by.
It'll be done by the on-duty crews, they'll, they'll be split up, and it'll be businesses in the Five Stations territory, so each one of them will be staying in their territory doing these, and, and the businesses will be notified, they just won't be showing up unexpectedly and say, "Here we are." They'll set up time and appointment for them to be coming in.
Okay, good. All right, good.
Thank you.
That's all I have, thank you.
Commissioners, do you all have anything?
I have one. For the City Manager, we have a, our wellness program, what the city has evolved, and it's pretty much become a model for some of the other businesses in town. And in the years past, we had offered an incentive for non-smokers, and with, with the new packet that came out, that wasn't in there this time. And I was wondering, what, what was your thinking on that, by not including that?
Well, I'm going back, visiting with people that were associated with that and trying to reacquaint myself with the thinking behind the change in the past, the nicotine abstinence. Part of that has always been a, essentially a credit that was given to everybody for their pledge to, actually, for their affirmation that they had not used nicotine at all in the prior six months and then going forward. Last year, the program was restructured somewhat to be a little bit more based on metrics, metrics being measures of, of health, typically blood pressure, cholesterol, and all those kind of things. As part of that, the tobacco incentive, the nicotine abstinence incentive ceased to be as a upfront incentive, and some of that money was rolled into the reward, if you will, for achieving a level of, I'm not sure what the word would be, measures in your metrics. We have bronze, we have silver, and we have gold, so depending on where you got, more money came your way as a reward for good health as measured by typical types of things, as blood pressure, your blood work, and all those kind of things. And really, the only way that tobacco or nicotine abstinence figured in that is that anybody who made the gold standard was, in effect, penalized if they also used tobacco. So, that, that was the structural change behind it. That is under review, and for two reasons. Number one, the structural change resulted in a lot less money being earned than what had been in previous years, and it was not our objective to, for the city to save money in, in those revisions at all. So, that came as quite a surprise, and it was a pretty good chunk of change. So, in fact, today, Greg Carlton was here and representatives of the HR Department and myself met to review this whole thing, and we are looking to reinstate nicotine abstinence as an incentive, probably not at the level it was, but at some level measurable to incite people to not use it. So, I think we're going to kind of balance this, blend it, kind of from where it was to what it became, is the direction we're headed, and we'd be happy to have Steve or Levi or whomever would be appropriate come forward when we, we do that and explain it. I think we're going to do it pretty soon because we're just starting the new year in January, and if we're going to make a change that is going to help the folks out financially, I'd just soon do it now rather than wait a year, so that's where we're headed with it.
Yeah, that, that's, I think that's great. With the report that we got from our professional, he came and talked about, one of the reasons that the cost has stabilized for the last couple of years is because of the work that the employees have done in taking ownership in their wellness. So, allowing those incentives to, to, to keep that going at some level.
Yeah, what we wanted to do, you know, and every, every program is a little bit different, but we wanted to make it a little bit more backend-based, in other words, let somebody's measures of health drive this a little bit more than what it was. And, and I think that's a good thing because I think that's an incentive, too, and it also, I think, helps people target some of their activities, whether it's physical activity or, or, or drug-type thing, to try to improve those things, and, and not just improve them, but stay with the prescriptions if they have them, you know, and there's some instances where folks will have one and not necessarily stay with it, but, yeah, I think, I think we've got a, from the direction we're headed is we've got a good balance now, but there is some shift in money away a little bit from the front end, a little bit more towards the backend.
Thank you.
Anything else? Are there any public comments?
There's any public.
Then everyone have a great Thanksgiving, be safe, and see you know at Noble Park on Friday at 5:30 for the lighting. All right, have a great weekend. Thank you.